Welcome to the special town council budget work session Wednesday, May 1st, 2024. There's no executive session, pledge allegiance. Julie, do you want to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're doing the silent roll call, Carla. Okay. The only action, the only item on the agenda today is a presentation to council followed by council discussion possible direction to staff. For the town of Cave Creek proposed fiscal year 2025 budget. Presented by the town manager and finance director, it's not on here, but I plan to have a call to the public after the presentation is done.
For a workshop? Okay.
Your floor is yours.
Well, I'll go ahead and get started with some introductory remarks, Mayor and Council. Mayor Council, we appreciate the council granting us three weeks to get to where we are today. It was very useful and productive for the staff to to have the additional time to try to finalize what the draft budget was going to consist of. The staff worked very closely behind the scenes, also with some outside assistance with Pat Walker. You're probably familiar with her, she has helped the town in the past with some of our budget needs. And has also been with Will Dan as we were going through some of these critical things such as the utility rate models, which are very important to what we're trying to do here. Obviously, the utility enterprises. We have a when you're dealing with those budgets, they they have a big impact on the general fund, which is rather unusual, but it's the way it is here in Cave Creek, and we're trying to make those funds more self sustaining. Both Pat and Kevin brought a high level of expertise and familiarity with our unique budget situation. And I have a higher level of confidence now that the staff were able to to work with them and get some good direction on particularly the the revenues expenditures and transfers. Um, I also want to point out that while you're not seeing it in front of you today, uh, the would you receive the budget books about three weeks ago? The strategic plan very clearly has linkages and ties to all of the budget and the department's requests. So while that's not there, it will be showing up in the in the final draft that we have that will be coming before you for adoption. I just wanted to point that out because you don't have that book because as you know, when we're going through the use of the implementation of that new budget software, it was very buggy and a lot of our numbers did not come out well, but my understanding is that that will be all fixed in time for the the budget process to be completed. Today, we're going to be tag teaming with the staff with Elias, Mitzi, Bridgette and myself, and so I will be chiming in on occasion. The goal is to try to complete the workshop today. So we don't need tomorrow. If we need tomorrow, it's there, but I'm pretty confident even if we run a little bit late, the goal is to try to get it completed today. But if we need to run over and and have the meeting tomorrow, we can definitely do that. I also wanted to remind the council that the budget is your budget. So what we have submitted to you for your consideration, I believe really reflects the best efforts of the staff and myself. And where possible, we've integrated council requests, but if we're missing anything or things that you request through today, please ask us or request that those be given consideration and we'll make sure when we come back on May 20th for the the tentative budget adoption that those items are in and we will go through and and segregate those and and identify those through the presentation to you so you have confidence that what you're requesting is in. Same thing goes with any adjustments or any reductions, we will demonstrate to you that those have been made. And then finally, we talked a little bit about this, but in front of you are the spreadsheets and the PowerPoint presentation and some other documents. We try to fix that so the numbering you could follow pretty closely. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mitzi, who actually is going to cover the first part. And then Elias is going to go over the budget assumptions and then we'll bounce back over to Mitzi. With that, I'll turn it over to Mitzi.
Sorry, microphone, can you hear me now? I'm going to start by presenting the five year general fund forecast. And this first slide is some high level assumptions that went into the five year forecast and you'll see when we get to the spreadsheet. The numbers that are listed there with the assumptions are footnoted on at the end of the line. But for revenues, we used various sources in making our forecasts out to 2029, those including the JLBC or the Joint Legislative Budget Committee projections, numbers given to us or projected out from the League of Arizona Cities and Towns and some estimates made by our town directors and staff. On the expenditure side, personnel was projected out at a two and a half percent increase over the years, year upon year. All of our other expenditures, for the most part, were increased at 2% with the exception of life and medical, which was at a 10% increase, just because that category seems to always increase more than that 2%. And the law enforcement professional services contract with MCSO was at a 10% increase for 25 and 5% thereafter. And the fire professional services was increased at 5% and that's for the Daisy Mountain contract going forward. You'll also see in there, there's a contingency that's placed per our town code, our town financial policies, and that's at 10% of our sales tax and state shared revenues. And then you'll also see on the next page that the revenues over expenditures does not include the fund balance forward, but does include the contingency reserve. And the model that I'm also going to be presenting also assumes the town will never use any contingency or operating reserve. So here is the five year forecast as presented. I believe in the slides at the back of the slides where the red tab is in your handouts is a bigger, I think it's on 11 by 17 sheet for you. Might be a little easier to see as the numbers are are a little smaller on this due to the years out. But on here, the first section shows our revenues, it starts with two years of our actuals, our current year adopted budget, what we're estimating this current year revenue to be at, what our 25 proposed budget is at, and then projected out for the next four years through 2029. Those revenue numbers, as I had indicated in the assumptions, the proposed budget number for 2025 and revenues is at a 2% increase. And then it's 1% for years going forward. The next section down, you'll see the expenditures. The first line there is our departmental expenditures or our operating expenditures. These do not, these numbers do not include any transfers or capital items, it's just operating. And that first line excludes the 10% contingency. The next two lines, our are supplementals that were estimated out, the first one being personnel supplementals. The second one expenditure supplementals for everything else besides personnel. And then that last line is the contingency reserve. So all of those added together come up with our total expenditures for those different categories and years going across. The actuals adopted budget proposed and are projected. The gray line under that is our net revenues over or under expenses. So that takes that revenue, that gray revenue, total revenue line above less the blue total expenditure line below to get what's listed there in the net revenues. So you can see from the from the forecast there that starting with the proposed 25 budget, the we're in the black 2.7, 2,794, 484. As that goes out to 26, 27, 28 and 29, those significantly decrease with 28 and 29 being in the red. Those numbers that are reflected there, though I do also want to point out include spending of that contingency reserve above of it's a little about 1.1 million and that line just above the total blue expenditure line.
Mitzi, were the were the expenses, the departmental expenses, were they inflated over the over this five year period?
Yes, and they were inflated based on that assumption sheet above. Sorry, I should have pointed that out, but yes, they were inflated at different rates, but the personnel was at two and a half. All the others were at two. Life and medical was at 10. And the MCSO contract was at 10 and the Daisy Mountain was at five.
So this is expected if we're projecting revenues at 1% or whatever it is.
I believe the revenues were 2%. The sales tax increase.
The sales tax, Bridget, correct me if I'm wrong, is it two across?
Oh, well, it's two and then one.
Okay, it's two then one, so it's two for next year and then one.
So are you going to act on this? Is this, well, I'm trying, I'm trying to rationalize, as I did last year, I'm trying to rationalize why we make a projection. Since it's not the budget, but it's projection.
Right, well, there's
economic disaster and don't take steps.
Well, no, I mean, just as an example, I mean, I went ahead and reduced all the the supplements that you had seen three weeks ago. Um, I had position requests that were general fund ones and the only one that you see is not only offset, but there's a $40,000 savings and eliminating position versus the one that I'm adding. So what? When I saw this, I was concerned myself, and so a lot of the supplements, unless they were absolutely necessary, are in now, this is five years and this is our best estimate and we had a lot of help from both Pat looking at our projections, but as you know, Pat tends to be very ultra conservative on the revenues and we also never fully expend our our operating expenditures. So we typically have approximately, you know, between 10% to 15% each year that does not get expended fully. Kind of vacancy savings or those types of things. And then same thing with the capital projects. The other thing is if you look in the big the big picture here, 2526 is the year that the second fire station, we start stepping up for 50% of that cost, and that's where everything starts increasing thereafter. So my suggestion is we're going to get through this budget process, obviously no issue with next year's numbers, but we're going to need to find ways to make sure we have the funding to be able to support what I would call core services, including fire and police and all the other general funds services that the council consider considers core services, but we're going to need to identify funding sources, and I'm not saying anything about a tax or anything, but what how we're going to fund those services that are very important. So it's a, it's a big hit going up 1.1.8 million is what the fire second station will cost us.
Yeah, it was about, yeah.
Well, we have rounds did the study.
I understand, but there were cost escalations that have occurred since the study was done.
Well, I, we can go on, but I don't want to. But I'm going to, once again, last year is the same thing. And so what is our, so our projected this year is 1.2, basically $15 million. And we adopted 14.7, so that's not too far off. But I, I just think that for our sales tax, maybe not the state share revenue, for our sales tax, we're being way, way too conservative and it inhibits, it shows a problem when there probably won't be one.
So absolutely, and I, again, the other factor, and I've always been a little bit more conservative myself on when you're doing these types of projections is we also don't know with the downturn, that's a very elastic source of revenue. So we start seeing a downturn, they've been talking about one for some time and we've been in this really great boom cycle for some time. But as you know, the consumer spending is usually the first things that declined during a beginning of a recession. So I, I agree with you, I think we need to continue to revise these numbers, but I think for what we had to do for next year and looking at the five year projection, I think we're going to continue to have to revise and and come up with you know, modeling of this and and if we need to get assistance on the outside to help us with that.
Well, we sailed through COVID. We sailed through COVID like nothing happened and even if we have a recession, it's not going to be anything like where you shut everything down.
Well, and to your point, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm going to finish my statement. So I, I just think we need to be realistic, we project out in the future, so we don't, if if this is for decision making, you need good data that's accurate and that is a good projection. And I, I really think we've got to check it out. People still buy food when when there's a recession. And beer too, I guess.
It is true that you're absolutely right, Mayor. Concern is legislature wants to take away the food tax, so that's very important to a small community like this.
Yeah, that's like a meteor strike, you can't, can't predict them. Okay.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
So why did we reduce revenue projections from 2% to 1%?
We didn't purposely reduce it, that was just the typical approach that a lot of other cities would do.
Reduce the projections.
What's, it's cumulative, you know, it's cumulative on each year, it's just built on. So for next year, it's 2% that we increased it by and then it's 1% going forward.
On top of the two, and then another one.
So it's a cumulative.
It's a cumulative.
So it's compounding. But to the mayor's point, it's still very ultra conservative and we could, we could look at making adjustments to that. And again, trust me, as a manager, I'm not interested in seeing a, you know, any red at all on any budgets. I've never had any in my budgets, the whole career I've had. So my, my interest is trying to ensure that we not only have the resources for the current fiscal year, but going forward for future fiscal years and that core services, those that our residents need and enjoy and and for the essential living and quality of life in our town need to be provided by the town. So. If I'm not mistaken, I believe this is the first time we might have done this.
This is the first time, yeah, I think so have done. Well, I think they did a five year projection, my understanding from Pat was when they were looking at the fire station.
20 years.
Oh, it was a 20 year, okay.
Was it? I didn't know that. I like, I didn't know that either, because I'd like to see what the variations, but thank you for telling us that.
Okay.
Okay, um, we'll go forward if there's no other questions. Again, this is really to help us kind of forecast and help us do future planning from a budgetary standpoint. It's, it always gets a little bit fuzzier when you're looking at the outer outer years, like maybe the year fourth through fifth or third through fifth. Because there's a lot of externalities that we have no control over.
And that last, I just also wanted to point out the last section at the bottom of that forecast is the fund balance bringing in the net revenues over expenditures from above, plus it adds back the contingency. And then it takes out the transfers that the general fund is projected to make to help support the utility funds and the proposed capital projects that were in our 25 to 29 CIP plan.
But I did have a question on that, the utility funds. Why are we taking anything from the general funds? I thought it was supposed to pay for itself. I thought the enterprise funds were supposed to pay for themselves.
That's how it is everywhere else, but there's been a long tradition here for a lot of good reason. And our understanding is that that's going to they're going to become more self sustaining other than maybe the wastewater fund, that that one's probably the problem child of the three. And if you look at when we get through today, you're going to see that on the operating side, we're actually revenues are very close to actually covering 100% of the expenditures. It's the capital that's the big driver on that and to your point, we're going to need to, and we've talked, Sean is going to be having his his capital master plan updated this year, and I hope to get the council back in a workshop to look at the rates so that the rate payers are actually covering that, so we're not having the subsidies coming from the general fund.
Yeah, I mean, I, I understand having to cover from the general fund, but at some point the general fund should be a temporary loan and the utility fund should pay it back. I mean, that's really how it should be run. For instance, we've taken 6.1 million dollars that was earmarked for land acquisition for preservation. And we've kind of used that to subsidize other things. And at some point, we need to take that 6.1 million dollars and put back in, you know, that acquisition fund.
Okay, well, um, those are all good questions, I, I do agree, and I think that the council should be very proud of themselves because I think between the the water advisory board or commission and the council's actions on rates, they are trying to move towards that and I believe that we're going to see after the acquisition costs of these utilities are paid off, these loans, that's going to free up some additional capacity. You have mentioned, and I agree, and I think some of the other council members, including the mayor, have said the same thing, that a lot of these capital projects that are in the utility fund or utility funds should be bundled together and financed so that we can smooth out the the budgets in those areas and that should help also with what, if any, contributions coming from the general fund. But that also helps to have that be rates supported rather than hitting all at one like fiscal year for some very heavy, very expensive capital projects.
No, I, I understand that, but that red goes away. If you, if you have the utilities paid for and doesn't have to come out of this general fund.
Absolutely.
I, I do agree with the mayor. You know, we really need, really need to look at that, maybe there's some kind of interim, you know, instead of calling it transfer to utility fund, you put it as a loan to utility fund.
I, I agree with that, in fact, one of the questions I had for Carrie after I started was, you know, having just even an interest only loan or something to recover back from the general fund for past transfers.
I don't even care if it's interest, I mean, if it's no interest loan, I mean, just put the money back at some point.
Right. Okay. Any other questions before I move on?
I just have a comment in that we, we talk about the need to understand this, the red lines here, the red numbers. And I guess what strikes me about that is it's important to have some concrete markers of where we are with that progress so we can know that it's actually happening and not like whoa at the end kind of thing. I think that's what I hear you saying, that's what I heard the mayor say.
Yes, and I will tell you, one of the things that in working with both Sean and the staff here and also Kevin Burnett with Will Dan, who's helped us with our utility rate models, it's very obvious that cost escalations, both with services and capital costs are huge drivers. And the utility rate model or the utility rates that the council adopted a few years ago, that was going to be a six year period of time that the rates would go into effect. They're, they're right now appear to be very close to recovering 100% of the operating expenses. But the cost escalations are the big drivers that are causing a lot of the issues where the transfers are occurring. So again, what we need to do and to your point is we need to get together this fall. And the reason why I'm saying this fall is that Sean's capital master plan will be done. It will give us an opportunity to look at which projects might be able to be deferred, those that might be bundled together as as debt service and those that can be kind of prioritized and then have Kevin Burnett help us with the rates and figure out what we need to do with the rates, because I'm not convinced that the rates that we have currently are going to be sufficient over the next few years. And so I think it's important to try to get ahead of this, to your point, before we're waiting for the cliff to happen, but we have plenty of time to do it, I just don't, I'm not one that's trying to postpone this, but the work isn't done yet for us to be able to address it.
Just to give a, to put a number on this, between 26 and 30, we're going to lose over $4 million of utility bonds spending. So we, we are in a, the peak spending period with regard to cash until those original bonds get to get pushed off. Beginning, and the first one is two years, two years from now, a half million dollars, and then the next year, it's almost 2 million. So relief is in sight, once we get through this rough spot.
The other thing too is, as part of this, we're going to bring in our financial advisor, Jim Strickland, who has helped the town in the past. He's the one that helps us with the bundling of our debt. And he knows the ins and outs and the times coverage and what our reserve requirements will be. And so it's important to bring him in along with Kevin Burnett when we have these discussions because he knows like what types of debt opportunities might exist for some of these capital projects. And so I think he's absolutely essential to looking at this also. It just came to our attention that some of the WIFA loans that we have now on the acquisition, there's like, I believe is at 1.3 million dollars that's being held in reserve. And that typically it declines every so often, you know, as the debt is getting paid off. But that is something that I believe we might be able to get released. And that's one of the things we need to talk to Mr. Strickland about because I believe that's the case. And what I would suggest, but again, we're getting the cart before the horse, is that maybe a good chunk of that might be used for the, the new WIFA loan. On the WIFA loan, I believe is going to have $600,000 and then maybe the balance could go into the reserve for the, that particular fund. So, but anyways, just those are things that are on our radar that we're, we're not losing sight of.
Good.
Hey, going forward, if there's no other questions, Elias is going to go into a lot of the narrative.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. And the slides that follow, I just want to go over some of the highlights of what we're going to be talking about, the town manager's proposed budget. In the slides that follows, you'll see the highlighted column for that proposed budget 2425. Just so you can follow along. On the last column to the right is the highlighted budget column. The expenditures that you'll will be talking about in the slides that follow are identified separately from capital expenditures. The department budgets are also presented separately in a small table that is showing the department's budget by use. And it's identifying the total expenditures for that department. It's important to understand, and and I'm speaking in general for the folks who are listening in also and or on Zoom. It's, it's important to understand where we start to have a better understanding of how this budget is being developed all along. And so as I mentioned in prior sessions, that we are starting this process from the current year's budget. And so this current year's budget is our baseline and then we build on that based on what other assumptions we have and requests. Sorry, I'm not moving along the slides. So following as we also work on this budget, we, we take into consideration all the GFOA recommendations for budget developments and and we follow their best practice. Having said that, we also look at our policies in place and make sure that they are followed. Said that, we also uh look at our policies in place and make sure that they are followed. Uh. Thank you. I can't drive and talk or text. So um we also look at our policies and make sure that they are incorporated in the budget that's being developed. And so in um one of one of the major uh. Highlights of our policies is the reserves and contingencies. And so the contingency uh. Is ten percent of the sales tax and state shared revenues. This is for general fund. And then for her for same and for wastewater is also ten percent sales tax and state shared revenue. Uh, for general fund, the contingency that we have in the budget is about one point one million. And for her face about thirty-nine thousand. But uh. Considering that uh. Waste water in the end is dependent on. Support from general fund, so there is no reserve uh contingency budgeted in in uh wastewater fund. And uh and the other financial policy that we also uh. Zoom in on and uh is the fund balance, and we want to make sure that we maintain a fund balance of at least. Uh, three month worth of expenditures. And so our current fund balance. Um. Uh. Includes a reserve of three. Times our expenditures, three month worth of expenditures, and that's about two point eight million dollars in reserve in the fund balance. So included in our fund balance for general fund, we have two point eight million dollars reserve. And this is. And restricted reserve in case of. Uh. And and foreseeing uh conditions that happen throughout the year, and you have a reserve.
Okay, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mitzi. Um, with the budget assumptions.
And so we're gonna um start with the uh general fund. And uh the first uh slide up here is for um highlighting what the CPI um percentage was. Um. As of, I think it was March of twenty twenty-four, and and it's showing uh at the CPI at three point five percent. Um, percentage change from um a year ago. And um. Also, um in the general fund for fiscal year twenty-four, um salary and benefits were uh. Budgeted at full uh employment for all positions. And actually, that should say fiscal year twenty twenty-five. We missed that. Um, a salary market adjustment of three and a half percent has been included in the um twenty-four, twenty-five proposed budget. As part of uh personnel cost totals. And a new management analyst position has been included in the finance department budget to replace. Um, the eliminated special project manager uh position.
Brady, um the three point five percent is uh projected to be an increase across all the salaries, all the staff members.
That that is correct. It would be those that are present at the time after July first. Yes.
So do we operate on a COLA?
It's the same. I hate to use the term cost of living adjustment, um COLA, but it effectively would be that way. Now, the council this year. Um, budgeted what I would call like a retention pay and also incentive pay for some difficult to recruit positions, both in the utilities and the general fund. Um, and so that's there if it's needed, and I'm actually right now going through. Um, based on performance, looking at various different people. Um, but most of local government has historically done what I would call um pay adjustments or. Uh, COLAs or cost of living adjustments. Um, we actually surveyed a number of cities um around the valley to see where we stood with that, and I don't know if is that in this. Information here.
I yeah, I think so.
Um, we did have. That it was pretty much anywhere between three and six percent, and a number of the other cities had like a um. Ongoing funding of merit increases, so those would be based on performance that if. It's satisfactory performance, and they would get a, you know, anywhere between a two and a five percent increase.
And that's my question. So not everybody's getting three and a half. It is based on performance.
Well. People would get it based, I mean, they're they wouldn't get it if they haven't been a good performer, for instance, but. But for those, if they're just generally not a a problem with. Or such, uh, they're going to get the three and a half percent. So, yeah.
Thank you.
And also, just to let you know too, we just had a uh compensation study, and the pay plan would also be. Um, adjusted by that percent, so we can still keep it relevant and and uh market competitive as well.
I think that's on the agenda for Monday's meeting.
Yes. That's a, that's the benefit part. Um, last fall, I believe you did the uh compensation plan.
Okay.
Um, but the benefits is an important part of that as well, and that's on the agenda for next week.
Okay, so the next slide here, um we're looking at general fund revenues. Um, and the town sales tax was budgeted with a conservative two percent increase over the fiscal year. Twenty-four estimated actuals, so where we ended fiscal year twenty-four, we um for twenty-five put in a two percent increase. The state shared revenues, including um. Our uh revenue sharing vehicle license tax and state sales tax um were estimated based on the fiscal year twenty-five preliminary budget estimates. That we had received for the town of Cave Creek from the Arizona League of Cities and Towns. The um adopted general fund budget for um our current year fiscal year twenty-four was um at. Eighteen million, two sixty-three, six seventy-one, which included expenditures, contingencies, and transfers out. The expenditures, contingencies, and transfers out for the general fund for our proposed upcoming fiscal year twenty-five. Um, the preliminary um budget that staff has put together today for this council workshop is at twenty-two million, three oh one, three eighty. This difference um in general fund expenditures and transfers out between the two years, fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five. Um, represents an increase of about four million dollars. And um. The primary reasons for this difference um are listed here on the slide, and I'll run through those quickly. Uh, the biggest being uh a million, eight ninety-four, eight hundred ninety-four thousand dollar transfer. Additional transfers uh required from the general fund out to the utility funds for um capital expenditures. Eight hundred and sixty-three thousand in public works, road improvements increase over the uh previous year. Three hundred and eighty-five thousand in administration fleet equipment purchases over the prior year. Three hundred and fourteen thousand in fire station capital expenditures. Two hundred and ninety-three thousand, two hundred in other contractual service agreements that we have, our uh IGAs. And two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, five hundred in um operating supplemental requests.
Just for clarification too, um the three hundred and fourteen thousand for the fire station capital expenditure, so you know, we we. Budgeted that at the five.
It was two million, five hundred and eighty-five thousand.
But overall, it was five.
Yeah, the total, yeah, so for fiscal year twenty-four, it's two million, five hundred and eighty-five thousand that's going to be spent on the fire station. And then for twenty-five, it's two million, eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand that will be spent to finish the fire station.
My only point in bringing that up, it's not we're over, it's just that because it's it's a a multi-year project, it's covering two fiscal years. It's just going to turn out that we're going to end up spending for next fiscal year. More than what we anticipated. We thought it was going to be spent this year, but it's going to be spent next year.
Okay.
Does that, when you add those up, does that add up to the uh the reduction in the uh uh reserves? Between the two years?
Um.
In other words, is this being, is this uh? I mean, we we've got the proposed budget, we have fifteen million dollars revenue in the proposed budget for general fund. And uh. Proposed budget shows two million, five. So I'm I'm trying to, I'm trying to rationalize this number here to that page we looked at with the general fund, baseline general fund analysis.
Oh, on the five-year forecast?
Yeah.
Okay, if you, um if I could just ask you to hold off one minute until I get through the next two slides, we're going to be going through the general fund in detail.
Okay.
Um. Okay, so our next slide um is showing our general fund uh revenues by source. Um, the columns again at the top, the first two are our previous um audited actual numbers. Um, followed by our current twenty-four adopted budget, and then uh where we were in March of twenty-four, where we estimate to be at the end of. Uh, June of this year, and the final column being our um proposed budget for next year. Um, our revenues are laid out there um by our categories, local tax, which includes um. Those revenue items listed there, town sales tax, our payments in lieu, um and our sales tax um from construction. Our local fees, our building permits, um engineering plan reviews, planning and zoning, right away fees, business licenses, et cetera. Uh, followed by our state share revenue section. Um, and then uh lastly, the miscellaneous revenue um section here, so um. This page of the slide um can also be found on your um big sheet packets on page six of thirty-nine in your packet. If you want to see um a bigger version of that. Um, I also wanted to note on this um slide, after we um had. Produced this packet for council, we realized that um that the blue highlights there for the um rodeo ground free fees. We were we're missing um twenty thousand dollars in the um twenty-four estimated amount and also in the twenty-five um proposed budget amount. So that twenty thousand will be added in um back in. I know it's um. Slightly immaterial to the general fund, but I I didn't want to um pass without mentioning it, but that will will pick that up in the tentative budget. Um, numbers that you guys um receive on May twentieth. Um, and then uh that last number, I just wanted to note in the bottom corner, the total revenues proposed for twenty-five um highlighted there in yellow. The fourteen million, four sixty-eight, nine fifteen, as we roll through um to the next page and the next slide. Um, this is the breakout, um. This is the general fund summary, and it's a breakout of our operating revenues and expenditures from. One time. Um. We break out our operating expenditures and revenues from our one-time operating sources and uses, so we can take into account. Um. The towns uh. How the town and the general fund is doing um operationally, so we've got these kind of split out. But the revenue sources, as you see here, um because I know this this sheet gets a little bit confusing, and when we covered it last year. Um, I just wanted to repoint it out for you all, but the general fund operating uh revenues that are shown there on the uh first line of this slide. Um, this uh are in our operating revenues is eight hundred thousand of construction sales tax. Three hundred thousand of building permit fee revenue and ninety-five percent of our state. Uh, sales tax. Um, are included up there as part of uh operating revenues, with the remainder of those revenue items being shown down below. And under our one-time uh sources, under construction-related revenue. But those two highlighted yellow revenue numbers do sum to the total revenue from the previous sheet. We've just got it broken out. Between operating and one time. Any questions on that? Peace. Before I move forward. Okay, so this general fund summary, then, um if we start on the right with the proposed twenty-five budget column. We're estimating uh general fund operating revenues for twenty-five of thirteen million, twelve thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars. Our operating expenditures by department show each department listed down below um. With their um proposed operating expenditures, which totaled the eleven million, three seventy-eight, seven twenty-three. And uh. Next section is our operating transfers in of the eight hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty. This is our transfer in from Spurcross. Um, which also includes the hundred thousand that's designated uh for um. General fund trails. Which leaves our net general fund operations in the black of two million, two million, four hundred and ninety-seven thousand, eighty-three dollars. So operationally, we're in the black, um that two point four, almost two point five million dollars. Our next section, moving down, is our one-time section, which includes um our construction-related revenue. Um, our reductions there for six million, nine hundred and ninety-five thousand, two hundred of um general fund capital expenses for. Fiscal year twenty-five. Um, followed by our uh reduction of uh two million, seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, ninety-eight dollars for our transfers to our utility funds. That's going to be required um as stated for fiscal year twenty-five and also our one point one million. Um. Fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollar contingency set aside. So um those one-time sources and uses leave us in um. The red are use, we're using um nine million, four hundred and sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars. So that netted with the two point four million dollars, four hundred and ninety-seven dollar balance above. Um, leaves us in the um red. Six million, nine hundred. Sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars. Coming out of our. Savings account. Um, of the general fund.
Unbalanced reserves.
Yeah.
Of of which, basically, the fire expenses are seven million, and this is uh basically uh. So basically, that's the fire station, the trucks, the things like that, startup costs, one-time cart startup cost.
Correct.
Yeah. Um, but again, to your point, I just wanted to make sure, because you had asked if if any of the operating. Uh expenditures were causing this, and it's not, it's clearly capital.
Capital. It's our one-time sources that um that's shown on here. So that um. That net change in fund balance of the negative six million, uh nine sixty-eight, eight fourteen, um netted against our be. Um, beginning fund balance, our estimated beginning fund balance of the thirty million, four thirty-four, seven ninety-one. Leaves us with an estimated fund balance um for fiscal year twenty-five, ending fund balance of the twenty-three million, four sixty-five, nine seventy-seven. From that, we set aside our operating reserve of three months of our operation, of our operating expenses. Um, which leaves our unassigned fund balance at twenty million, six twenty-one, two ninety-six for the general fund.
I just want to point out that this is the exact plan that we decided to do two years ago for the fire station. That take the fire station one-time cost out of the reserve funds. That's exactly the program that we're seeing here today.
Okay. Any questions on the general fund summary, or mayor, did I answer the question you had asked me before it is answered? Okay.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So we're just using our piggy bank to cover these uh one-time expenses for things that we need in the town.
Correct.
Yeah, when you say red, people's ears.
Sorry, yeah, we will be dipping into our savings account fund balance to um fund.
Which is actually considered a a best practice.
Yeah.
Um, it's, you definitely don't want to do it for ongoing um.
Oh, no.
Operating expenses, you know, because it will eventually catch up and you'll be really.
Yeah.
Really in the in the red. Any other questions? We'll move on to um some of the operating department budgets.
Okay. Um, so the first operating um. Department budget that we have shown is um the town manager. This is um a summary of the expenditure by use table. But the um full detail sheet would be found on page seven of thirty-nine in your um. Big sheets, if you want to refer to that. Um, one thing just to point out, in the personnel line, um of the expenditures here in the town manager. Proposal includes the two and a half percent of uh general fund salaries for the recruitment and retention of general fund employees. Any questions on?
That was, was it sixty thousand?
Um.
For the general fund. Retention uh.
It's sixty-nine, yeah, almost seventy, sixty-nine and change.
So I'm making the assumption that the contracts and services are for the strategic planner. Or this, or is there for the thirty-three nine?
On the big sheet.
I don't know, on page, on your page nineteen here.
Oh, yeah.
Thirty-three nine is the strategic planner, correct? Thirty three nine is the strategic planner, correct?
Um, it includes that, um, there's professional services in there of nineteen thousand, but it also includes um. Some stipends that are paid um to the town manager as well as um. Membership dues for certifications and stuff, there's extra stuff in there, but the big chunk of that's professional services.
Could we just kind of put a little asterisk somewhere and just say, you know, break that out because that's the one that, you know, I know it's a catchall, but it's like to know what the catchall is. You know, what's being tossed into the catchall, does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I, I think that's a good suggestion and one of the things that um it's too late to do it this year, but other places I work, um, there's a. There's a division called either general government or um. What is it, general government or non-departmental and it's where things like that would go. Um, it'd be your mag, membership and dues, league memberships and dues, it might be studies that the council's requested. Things of that sort go into that where it's not attributable to one department and that's, that I think makes a lot of sense to create a division just as a catchall for that.
Yeah, I just. My experience has been when you talk about contracts and services, people are going to go. What contract has he got working?
Right.
So if we can just put a note as to what that goes, maybe in future years, break that out into a different category, that'd be great.
That is broken down on the big one.
It is, yeah.
Understand that. But it's not in the summary sheet, which is going out there of our audience.
Yeah, good point.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on town manager? No, okay. So that um next department is administration, uh which includes uh town clerk. And I T and fleet. We've got um. Total operating expenses for administration of the million five seventy one three forty six proposed and capital, which includes a fleet of seven hundred and forty three thousand for a total department total of two million three hundred and fourteen thousand three forty six. Um, the detail of this is, would be on page eight of thirty nine of your um. Big sheets.
Again, most of that's for fire, uh, the fire trucks, fire stuff, the vehicles, um. Thank you. Um, is the capital equipment still in there at seven hundred and twenty five thousand? What, what is that?
The seven hundred and forty three thousand?
Uh, it's twenty five on the big sheet, so I was looking to big sheets.
Um.
It's on page uh nine to thirty nine.
Seven hundred.
On the big sheets. The details. And, and the, 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 the software, computer software costs.
Yeah, so on page uh nine of thirty nine of your big packet. In the capital expenditures by project box, that breaks out the total of the seven forty three. Um, so it includes the seven twenty five that you just pointed out on page eight and then there's another capital line on page um. Or I'm sorry, the seven twenty five on page nine in the capital section and then there's eighteen thousand for um equipment under the uh town clerk.
Okay, so that's, that's the detail of that.
Right, okay. And then that capital expenditures by project box details what projects are getting paid for out of that money.
So what, what is the, what, what is, what's all the software, I see you spent two hundred thousand this year and another two hundred thousand for the coming year. What is that? That's a lot of software.
Um.
So um, I know that eighty thousand is for the building permit system for next year. Um, is that what you're referring to, next year, how much?
Well, uh.
No.
And then we have some licensing.
I don't recall any software projects that we could have forgotten.
I think those are the on, uh, this, Teresa's the one that um puts this budget uh together, so um I, I'm not sure I have. The um complete answer, but I'm going to take a stab at it.
Brian is here too.
Yeah, Brian.
Brian.
I believe that's for like our Microsoft, our Casell, our Open Gov, our um. Our software packages.
And then new budget.
Annual, those annual.
Implementation is also built into this year.
There's some H R software that's included in there.
Licensing.
Yeah, licensing and software.
Is that an ongoing expense every year or is that a one time?
Um.
So when you do the initial implementation, it's always higher and then it's going to be an ongoing licensing cost and then periodically we do like a major update um. With, you know, some of the software that we have and so there's going to be costs involved in that, I think we also have our, is it Civic Plus, we're going to be doing a refresh of or? So that's our Civic Plus is our hosted website, um, which is hosted by another party. Did you want to kind of address the, the, the specifics that the mayor is asking?
I think this is the first time Brian has ever spoken at, at the main table.
It's, it's great to be here. Uh, so yeah, we do have a, a lot of ongoing software costs on a yearly basis. It, yeah, good. Uh, we have the expenses for, for Zoom yearly, Adobe, Microsoft Office. Uh, there is this given a significant amount, I think the way that it has been accounted for has been concentrated in administration this year or before it was spread out. More to different departments that use them specifically, but we're trying to calculate that cost altogether, I believe now. So that, that may be why that number seems higher than it has in the past, but yeah, we are trying to calculate all of those together in one bunch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions on administration? Okay, we're going to move forward then to um our next department, which is legal services. This can be found on page ten of thirty nine of your big packet. And um. For fiscal year twenty five proposed budget, we've got um three hundred and fifty thousand in there, um. That's to cover um our town attorney and um. There's uh an amount also in there for any settlements that may arise. Questions?
So we, that same amount we budgeted last year.
Correct.
Which you. Hopefully we'll never spend.
Correct, and, and you can see um in the estimated column, but we. We're estimating those to come in at um. Fiscal year twenty four year end of around a hundred thousand, so. Okay, our next um. Department is development services, found on page eleven of thirty nine of your packet. Um. We've got operating expense total for development services of a million seven hundred and eighty two thousand six hundred and eighty dollars, capital of six hundred and sixty thousand for a total. Um, department budget of two million four forty two six eighty. Any questions on development services?
Well, I, so I think this is about year five of my trying to get the, 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 the permit development fee study off the ground and put into effect, I understand we're doing it now. I mean, that.
The, the user fee study is underway and, and I didn't want to talk about it until we actually um got to this point, but. Um, so one of the benefits, I believe that um in talking to the staff, that we are probably undercharging for what the market is for the fees, so.
I was right.
And um, but overall, um, overall user fees as a whole generally are about fifteen to twenty percent of the overall uh revenue picture. Um, and we're probably that way in a lot of other areas as well, so um we will be coming back to you with. Some recommendations, um, the study I believe is going to be coming to a conclusion um probably sometime in uh June. And so we'll be able to schedule a work session with the council and get you um. Uh, to, to see what these fees are and what we can possibly do to, for full cost recovery where it, it makes sense and others where it might make sense to have some. Um, you know, subsidy depending on the type of service, so.
So I do have a question for uh building services, um, since we're going to be getting the rodeo grounds apparently at some point from B L M, do we have? Money to maintain rodeo grounds in this?
I'll let, I'll let the development services director address that, um.
I mean, we just put a whole bunch of money into improving the rodeo grounds, it'd be nice to make sure we maintain them instead of watching them deteriorate over time.
We, we actually um. Councilman Rhodes budget year over year for maintenance, repairs. Um, and upgrades for the rodeo grounds, even though we are not the in title holder of it, so.
Where is that in the budget here? Because you have rodeo grounds, everything's kind of blank, if they get to contracts and services and moderating. On page twelve.
And take this up.
Yeah. Yeah, that is the um. On page twelve. There's a total of eighteen thousand five hundred contracts and services, um. The professional services we've got for five thousand dollars, it's, that's going to do, um, we're going to have an electrical audit done of the rodeo grounds. A shotgun hernia space, the, over the years, uh, it's been kind of cowboyed in all the electrical services and everything. You dig a hole, you're going to hit something, so we really want to get somebody out there and do an audit of, of all the electrical infrastructure that's out there. Um, but really in total, it's about thirty three thousand five hundred dollars in various um maintenance. Um, equipment leases, supplies and everything that go into uh operating that, those facilities.
Uh, I'll leave it.
I have a question. Right.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Um, okay, so under advertising, which is under contracts and services, you. Reduced it by two thousand dollars from this year. And then further on down the line, under economic development. You've reduced it to zero as far as I'm reading, unless you've moved it into another category or department?
Uh, yes, Vice Mayor, so, so advertising under contracts and services and I'm on page eleven, um, that is for. Uh, cases that come in, we have to advertise, provide notice for different cases and um, but notice in the newspaper, mail out letters, those types of things, so it's not advertising in the general. Sense of come to Cave Creek and spend your money, um, as far as the economic development that is being shifted over to uh administration, I believe we're uh considering. Maybe a, a new kind of sub department and, and the town manager can speak more to that. Um, under the town clerk, that would handle kind of the marketing and, and everything as we've discussed.
We already passed that up? Or can we go back and look at that?
Yeah, we'd have to go back to administration, look at communications and public affairs.
I didn't realize that. So Vice Mayor, that is uh on page uh nine of thirty nine. Of your packet.
Okay.
About a third of the way down.
I see it. Yeah, there's a new division in there, communication and public affairs and off to the right hand side is the um proposed twenty five budget for that. Portion of administration.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question about um, on the personnel side. One, one of the things that we have is um, as an element of our strategic planning is to reduce. The amount of time it takes to get permitting and all of that, all that paperwork handled and I don't see any numbers here. Of. To support staff doing that or, I mean, wh- where's that? Where's that financed?
Um, I'll let the director come up, but also um the building permit system that is um. Uh, we're, I believe we've already gone through the identification of the software, we're going to probably go through and do a request for proposal if we haven't done that already. Um, but that is going to be really very helpful because that will be able to let us visibly see how long it takes to process. Permits and we'll be able to have a goal set and people will generally know, they'll also be able to monitor it themselves, they'll be able to go and see where it is in the process and so um. These are very, I, I went through implementation of something very similar about uh four or five years ago. And it really improved the turnaround time on that and it also increased accountability. There were no longer um, you know, lost or, you know, the paper that somebody might have submitted, don't get lost because it's all there digitally. But I'll let, I'll let uh the director address it.
Right, it's been a goal that we've had for a while.
Um, yes, and um. Really, so with permitting specifically, it touches multiple departments and, and multiple I C E. Um, I can tell you just under development services, we are adequately staffed and we meet our deadlines to review plans thoroughly and complete. Within a lot of time and turnaround uh comments, so it's something, you know, as an administrator, I'm always looking to. Shrink cracks and make things seamless. And it's something we'll continue to work on with the other departments and, and making sure that they have the support to review plans and, and get things through.
There's got to be something because.
And the.
You still get blamed, you know.
Of course.
Yeah.
Uh, council member, council member, I was, I apologize to you because I was remiss, um, we've worked on our um. Strategic plan, uh, performance measures and we're going to be trying to bring that to you as well.
Awesome.
And uh Luke was very good in identifying what I would call um performance measures that address that particular issue. Um, and that's going to be something you'll have an opportunity to weigh in on.
So I do have another question regarding personnel, um, we have a planner, trainee is a half of a F T E and then we have a trails coordinator, so that can be the same person or two different people?
Uh, those are two different positions, uh, so the planner, trainee is something that uh historically the department has done. Um, if there's ever a, an opportunity for like an internship.
All right.
Or a, a, you know, learn on the job kind of thing, a trial period, then the uh trails coordinator is uh currently a part time employee. Uh, finishing up different projects.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we're going to move um forward to uh the court department. And this would be on page fourteen of thirty nine of your packet. And we've got a proposed twenty five uh budget of a hundred and ninety six thousand fifty dollars, which represents our um. Contract with uh the town of Carefree. For twenty five. Any questions on court? Okay. Next is uh law enforcement. Uh, this would uh be found on page fifteen of your packet. And we've got operating and um or total department uh proposed budget for twenty twenty five of a million four ninety five. Fifty nine dollars. Any questions on? Law enforcement?
Uh, what does the comment mean?
Oh.
I thought we were, I thought we took care of it last year, we making sure that all the pensions were funded at the appropriate level.
Yeah, I believe that will be coming forth um to council as well, but um the P S P R S funding policy, that's a policy that gets looked at um every year. And that amount fluctuates based on our, you know, how the investments are doing in the system and our unfunded um liability. But the amount's been included um in the fiscal year twenty five budget in total and we will um bring that forward to council to um. Present that information and options.
I believe it's uh May twentieth, it said um P S R S um. Uh, policy that comes before you and I know that the councils addressed it before, what you see there is two hundred and eleven thousand dollars, which would pay it off completely. Um, if we, my, my take on that is either you pay it off entirely or you try to make a. A stab at it over a period of three years or four years and it sounds like we try to do that this fiscal year, council is wanting to try to um, to work towards paying it off. So if you want to pay it off, then we don't have that liability any further showing on the books for the retirement system. So.
Any other law enforcement questions? Okay, we're going to move forward then to our next department, which is um fire and emergency. We've got operating, uh, this can be found on page sixteen of thirty nine of your packet, um, we've got operating expenses. Uh, for fire of three million one hundred and sixty four thousand one hundred and ninety nine dollars. We've got the capital in there of two million eight hundred and ninety nine thousand for um fire station number one. Uh, for a total department uh budget for fiscal year twenty five of six million sixty three thousand one hundred and ninety nine dollars. Um, with a note, um. When the uh C I P program came forward to you guys, I think that was a couple of weeks ago, um, included in fire was, um, I think it was listed as P P E or protective. Um, some kind of protective equipment that, yeah. The two hundred thousand each year that has been removed out of capital and moved up into the commodities line of the fire department budget. So that's the increase there. If you look at the twenty three twenty four adopted budget column of twenty two thousand five. That's the big jump in that that two hundred thousand's been moved up to that line.
Which I think makes a lot of sense. It's, you know, we talked about this turnout gear. Um, it could be job to life replacement or any kind of equipment that they need on the job. So. I think it's always good to have that there so that if they do have something, we have the funding to go ahead and do it. And it's certainly better. Than them trying to provide it and charges overhead costs for that. So we should just carry it on our operating budget. As a. Line item.
And firefighters are known for breaking stuff.
Okay, any other questions or comments on fire?
Just one thing, when when do we, of course, Daisy Mountain's going to build a new fire station, and then we're going to have half the personnel. When does that kick in?
Well, let Jim come up, but my understanding is fiscal year twenty five twenty six is when we'll be paying for the half the cost for the personnel. As far as the station, did you want to kind of give them an update as to where we are on that? Uh, Jim?
Sure, Mayor and Council, thanks for having me here today. The your specific first question is. That additional cost will hit in July of next year, not this upcoming budget, the following budget. And the reason is, if you recall, when we did ours. They'll be posting and hiring those firefighters and putting them in the academies for the expectation that their station will open in November, December of the following year. So we'll hire those folks first, train them, and then when the station opens, they'll have that. They're going to do similar to what we did here. Fifteen people will pay for seven and a half. That will all go into the. The formulas that we have in the in the budget or in the contract. And then the station on our station. Um, we did a quick little tour the other day, and I hope that you got something out of that because I I'm just. And honestly, I'm just thrilled with how those guys are performing over there. That station is going up very well. Well. You'll be proud of that station. It's going to be a good asset to the town, and I think you'll be happy once we get that done. So if you have any questions about what you saw the other day, I'll be happy to answer that. Thank you.
Thanks, Jimmy.
Thanks. Going to move forward then to our next department, which is finance. And with a proposed operating. Budget of six hundred and eighty five thousand three hundred and sixty three dollars. There was a change made related to the auditing services that in fiscal year twenty four was included as part of the town council budget. That's been moved. Into finance for fiscal year twenty five. Under the contracts and services.
This doesn't change the fact that there's an auditing committee. It's just it's more appropriate. I think when it was originally requested, it was put in the budget and that was a placeholder. But it it makes sense since the council really doesn't have the, you know, authority to administer, you know, day to day kind of stuff. Makes sense to actually have this in the finance department, but we'll still have the audit committee.
Are you going to survive with three point seven people instead of the four point seven? I mean, you're you're cutting. From four seven, four point seven FTE to three point seven FTE, is that going to be sufficient to do what you need to do?
Actually, I don't believe there's a cut. Where is he seeing a cut?
Are you on looking on page seventeen?
On page seventeen.
Yeah, it's it's actually, it's it's a it's neutral because the position that was eliminated, maybe it didn't get reflected here, but it's really. Ones being eliminated, ones being added, so it should be the same level. So I don't, that might be a.
You know, that, sorry, council member Rhodes, that is a typo, that management analyst. Line. When it was added. That one is in fiscal year twenty four, that position doesn't exist in twenty four. So sorry, that is a typo. It should be three point seven for twenty four, so it remains the same. It was just a retitling of positions. Any other questions on finance? Next is. Town council budget. Um, this can be found on page seventeen of thirty nine. And actually, it's eighteen of thirty nine of your packet. And. The proposed twenty five budget. Operating expenses are six hundred and eighty five thousand, oh, sorry. I didn't flip my page. All right, I'm still back on finance.
I think we're going to have to call nine one one because I see some heart attacks out there.
Sorry. I didn't flip my page. The town council operating budget is ninety five thousand four hundred dollars. And the change here, the big change here was the one that we just mentioned on the last slide with regard to finance, but the auditing services was moved out of town council into finance budget. And then this. Operating budget also includes the forty thousand in community grants in the contracts and services line.
Yeah, which I don't understand.
Well, I will take full responsibility for this. The mayor and I had some conversation over last week about my supplements that I had. And one of the supplements for full disclosure, I know there was interest in. Increasing this amount to eighty or to a hundred thousand. Is that where you're going?
No, I I I'm fine with it staying at forty thousand. I just don't understand why it's in the town council budget. It's not our expenses.
I I agree. And and then again, this is kind of what I'm harkening back to having a general government or a nondepartmental. This is where those are typically at in other cities I worked in.
Yeah, it just.
So I think a lot of it is these things happen where they are placeholders, they don't get lost. But I agree with you, and I'd be happy, you know, we have time between now and the tentative budget. We'll be happy to put it in a more appropriate place, maybe administration.
I agree.
Might make sense. So are you okay with that?
Accurate, it doesn't reflect our expenses. It's the it's the organization's.
Right, so we'll we'll definitely do that. Also. I just thought initially I. Put in eighty thousand dollars before I ended up cutting down a lot of our. Supplemental requests and if I know it's kind of hard to minister with the number. Of grant requests and the money that we had available. So if if the council wanted to entertain, this would be the time. If you wanted to increase it, if you wanted to just hold it for another year.
Yeah, ideally, of course, we would love to have it increased, and I think we talked about it during. The time when we were considering the community grants program, but I think what we made it work. Uh, we'll make some changes next year going into it, letting people know how much money we have available. Okay. And I think that will clear up a lot of the confusion.
So Vice Mayor, would it be prudent to show some increase because in order to. Recognize the excellent projects that were brought to us?
I really think forty thousand is fine. I'm very comfortable with our government allocating that amount of money to nonprofits. We are not in the business of supporting them entirely. They need to, you know, raise their own funding. We are here to supplement it in a small way, and I think this reflects that.
Okay, good.
May I ask a question? I once knew the answer to this, but why are we paying workman's compensation?
So, um, we are required to have workmen's comp.
For for council, for unpaid volunteers. Okay.
Just like.
You know, nobody told me I could I could be taking that to the bank. Good grief. All these years, I never had a claim.
When when they when they pay you, it'll be a total of zero that you could take to the bank. It won't go very far.
Just feels like they're ripping us off on that one.
I I mean, aren't we covered by legal insurance as well?
Yes, yeah, the town's general liability coverage for the council.
Itemized.
Right.
Professional services for twenty five thousand. Is that the strategic planning group that we hired or who is that?
Do you recall what's in that line?
I think, Elias, did you do this? Budget?
It's for the strategic plan? Okay, yeah, and that is under us, so.
Okay.
Grady, they.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, strategically, they did.
Yeah.
I'm saying this. Right here, current year budget, one of five thousand zero.
Right, now that's correct.
Except that begs the question, are we doing strategic planning every year?
We should do a strategic planning update every.
I would say what we should do is we should have a facilitated update to the council that shows the progress that's been made and if we need. And and I think these guys are worth their weight in gold. Well, not quite, maybe their weight in gold, but.
Silver.
Yeah, I mean, they're really very good, as you know, and so I I do think that's very helpful. And what I would probably do is I would actually have them do our retreat. And have the strategic plan be a big part of the retreat. And they could facilitate the retreat and the strategic plan part of that.
Okay.
So I think that makes a lot of sense.
Okay, any other comments?
I answered your question.
Holiday celebration, you're going to come visit me at the beach?
I can answer that, I I if you'd like. Every year I advocate that we celebrate the Fourth of July in some fashion, that we put some wreaths out or some kind of. Holiday decor and same thing at the in December. And we've never had a budget for it, and we always put it up haphazardly at the very last minute. So I'm glad to see that there's some money allocated and we can do it properly. Other towns spend ten times this amount.
Right. Yeah, so the intent is, we've got these wonderful. Hardware fixtures in the medians where we could put really nice, cool seasonal banners up that you see in a lot of other cities. And it may cost a little bit more. If it it does, the first year, we will come back to and and let you help. Uh, approve a transfer for that. But the point is, once we make this initial investment, then we can use these year after year. And we try not to date them with with years or anything on there. And you try to go with the patriotic one during the summertime, you know, like from Memorial Day through. You know, the Fourth of July, and then you do the holiday one. Uh, you might have a spring one, but it all fits in very nicely with what we're trying to do, I think, from a tourism and economic development standpoint, but also for our own residents who. Are here and we don't really do much in the way of activities for these holidays.
So I agree.
Do we have money in for a volunteer recognition event? I I don't think that's been brought brought to council yet.
Did that? Did that get cut when I made my cuts? So we do recall what the amount was.
Okay.
Yeah, no, it's it wasn't the mayor's fault. I I told him to cut them, and then they said, well, what about the building permits to some? Oh, no, that needs to be in there. So it's like. I was like a mother at the checkout counter with a kid trying to buy candy bar and only having two dollars, you know. Um, anyways, we. We put seventy five hundred. If the council would like, I would, I think it's very important to recognize the volunteers in this community. So we can put that back in and it will be in the tentative budget if if you're okay.
I don't think we need that much.
Really? Because I think we could do a nice little banquet or something like that.
Oh.
A reception or?
And and the concept is, you know, we've got. Planning commission, we got council, we have, we're the water advisory committee, we have the the visitors bureau, we have the volunteers in town, and we don't do anything. Uh, when they come in, you say hello, when they leave, you say goodbye without any recognition. So I think it's important that we have a sense of teamwork.
We would, if if you think it might be a bit much, we can reduce it down to five thousand, you think?
What I was thinking.
Okay, um, it's the first year, so we can. If we need to come up with more money, we can find the money to increase if we have to, but let's start with five, maybe.
Where did we put the museum support?
It's it's in here under. Do you recall where the it's thirty thousand a year is what you're asking for, right?
I had a comment on this issue.
Just real quick, years ago, the council awarded, but the mayor presented. Yeah, two annual awards, one was called the Pioneer Award, one was called the Trailblazer Award. And it was basically recognition of people in the community that had done things historically. Especially before it becomes posthumous. So we were able to get awards to a lot of people who were active in the early days with the Mother's Farm Book and the museum and the library and stuff like that. It was discontinued. But I just would suggest that.
I think it's a great idea.
You know, I like assembling everybody at something like that and then recognizing them while they're there. I I didn't get the second, I got Trailblazer Award. What was the other one?
Made it up, but it was called the Trailblazer Award, and somebody who had done something innovative in the community. And the other was the Pioneer Award for somebody who had historically done things that led to. You know, I'll give an example, this is not a nomination, but someone like Martha Arnold, she and her husband were on the incorporating committee, and he actually drew up the maps. So there are people out there still that are with us. That we were trying to acknowledge. Ready, you must remember some of this, didn't you, or maybe it precedes you too, but anyway. The council would offer input and the mayor would present, it was done in a meeting.
Right, or we could create our own.
Well, when when we get to the planning phase, we'll we'll, I think we'll do something like that.
Grady, they think that I'm I'm being too frugal. So you can go.
All right, seventy five hundred, back to seventy five hundred or more? Ten?
Seventy five, let's just leave it the way it is.
You know, why don't we, I mean, we don't spend unnecessarily. Do you want to just make it ten and then we'll we'll try to be under ten?
Town manager discretion.
Okay, well, we'll do, we'll bring it back at ten.
Okay.
Um, I'm trying to find, I was told it's under administration, the museum support.
Yeah, under nonprofessional services, I believe.
What page number is that? Well, it calls it out. Do you remember what page number?
Administration.
Administration starts on eight.
Professional services. Is that just the museum?
That was, yes.
Thirty five thousand?
Well, I thought it was originally thirty thousand.
It's thirty.
Oh, okay, I'm I'm being told it's it's thirty thousand and then Teresa had five thousand for some other. Purpose and I, she's not here to be able to answer that, so.
So thirty thousand for the museum.
Yeah, and that's for the marker program that they do.
Landmarks and.
Right.
Keeping our.
So, um, council member Rhodes, we will denote that with an asterisk or something. In our detail, it does show up, but unfortunately, it's not here on the spreadsheets.
It's in there, that's managed.
Well, no.
Okay. Any other questions before we move off town council? So the next item is our contingency budget and for. Fiscal year twenty five, it's one million one fifty nine, one hundred and fifty nine thousand three hundred and fifty nine dollars, which represents ten percent of our state shared revenues and sales taxes. And that amount set aside as contingency is per our financial policy number one. Next department is Public Works. For fiscal year twenty five. Public Works has a proposed operating expense. Uh, budget of a million five seventy four, six fifty six. Capital of two million six hundred ninety three thousand two hundred for a total department budget of four million two sixty seven, eight fifty six. The detail of those expenditures can be found on page twenty of thirty nine of your packet.
The. The increase in contracts and services, that to do more potholes? Repair.
There was, um. Yes, um, I think.
Hundred and twenty five thousand.
Thousand in.
We doubled it.
Maintenance. Um, that was included in that line. Any questions on Public Works? Councilman. Twenty of thirty nine.
Um, can we talk about an update on medians? We have a proposal for a hundred thousand on public safety study recommendations. And then we have two hundred for the median enhancement. And I know we're in the process of reviewing and there's going to be. And I know we're in the process of reviewing and there's going to be bids or submissions and so forth. But.
Well, I had asked, just to your point, council member, I had asked the staff, I think we're going to come back and give a report back to council because there's a lot of interest in this. And so, um, also, I had been asked by a couple of council members right after I came on, they wanted to, um, ensure that, um, our traffic engineering, uh, group that we use is also was coordinating with the, um, landscape architect and those so that we didn't end up putting some improvements and then having to undo them for some traffic improvements in the future so that there'd be better coordinations. I'm going to go ahead and just ask both, um, Luke and, um, the public works director to come up and, and be able to address it, but I think we're coming up pretty close to coming back with a report to the council on this, correct?
Since you're gonna miss the presentation.
Yes, I, I will not be here June sixteenth, but, uh, we have, uh, contracted with a, uh, landscape architect with Greepickett and also a, a local landscape contractor to do an inventory of, of all the medians. Um, and also provide different recommendations, um, uh, to bring forward and report to council and, and go through a report summary of, of, uh, kind of best practices and, and what to do to, um, enhance, rejuvenate, rebuild, um, our median, what, what they've found so far is really, um, the maintenance of the medians has essentially suffocated and killed all the plant life over time in there and, um, they've got a bunch of recommendations to kind of rejuvenate that. Um, like I said, the, they'll propose kind of a wide swath of, of range of options, uh, for the council to, to choose from, ranging from, uh, very cost effective to a complete tear down rebuild.
And? Well, I'm sorry, but the only reason I asked the question is, I'm just trying to figure out the sequence, so for calendar, or, uh, fiscal year starting July first, in the new fiscal year, you'll have this information back and you'll make a report to the council with recommendations, right?
Correct, uh, that is June sixteen, yes, is, is when you'll be presented, you'll be presented this information.
So it's in the current fiscal year that you'll present to the council?
Right.
But by then the budget will be set.
That is correct, but nothing is, you know, we won't go forward if the council is having some concerns at that June sixteenth meeting, we were not, you know, we can't go forward with a project if the council doesn't support it. Um, the money might be there, it's only there as a placeholder.
I guess that's my question is that, if the report was successfully received and there looked like there was some proposals that made sense and they were proportionate, what are you going to get for two hundred thousand that runs for the entire length of the?
Sure.
Uh, we have, uh, met with Greeley Pickett and we've seen the initial. And depending on, you know, they're going to present this mortgage board, you know, that you're going to be able to pick from. And so initially, and it may end up being a multi-year project. As they told us that if we pick option A, we can probably do it within two hundred or, you know, two hu, in the two hundred thousand dollar range and come up with something that will be, you know, lush and what you're looking for within about two years. If you come in and say you want instant gratification, you know, and that you want more planted materials rather than, you know, smaller, or you want more mature items and you want, and that would require irrigation and things like that, then you're going to pay for, you're going to pay more upfront. Where if you give it the time to develop in the plan, it will develop into, um, what we think it will be a very exciting median, uh, medians for you and exactly what you're looking for.
Well, forgive me for belaboring this, but, um, I guess what I'm trying to ask is if your work is completed and comes to the council and there's a decision made to move forward on something, then that's something that would be moved forward on would be in the new fiscal year, the same calendar year and ending next June thirtieth. What would you possibly be able to, and I even get the multi-year, but what possibly would be your ability to do anything for two hundred thousand? I mean, we look at speed tables for much higher prices and all these other different things and and, and again, I'm no expert, but it just seems like this could go on for five or six years. And we've talked about this for over a year and we've accepted some donations of plants and they've been put out there. But there really has not been anything done other than we blew them, took the trash out, we put some transplants in. But we're looking at twenty-six maybe before the medians begin, even on a stage basis, are brought up to some type of standard. It just seems like the funding will be inadequate for whatever the council eventually chooses. And we're just going to be talking about this for two, three, four more years.
So, council member, you're probably more likely right than wrong on this. And I would tell you what the challenge is, is when the staff had to put together the budget and what the numbers were, they really did not have enough information from the consultant at the time to, in fact, they didn't have any information from the consultant, they had to put numbers down. Um, and they did go with their best guess. If the council's, um, concerned and they share it with you, then we can certainly increase this for next year. And, um, we will have it further refined in June, but again, to your point, what can we realistically accomplish in one year is two hundred thousand dollars enough? Money to do what, you know, even if it's phased in over a two or three year period of time, it may just not be enough money. So if you want, you could certainly, um, give direction today at the workshop to increase that if the consensus of the council is to do that, we can certainly do that.
Did they give a range of, a rough range of how much it would cost?
Again, we've just looked at a preliminary, at preliminary numbers and I think it ranged from two hundred and twenty-five thousand to about four million.
Yeah.
Three point five million.
Oh.
It's like I said, it's a mortgage board.
Well, I understand, and I'm not trying to lead the group here either, it's just that, um, is this a priority for the council? Last time we chatted about this and the vice chair was pretty animated about seeing something. It's just that the funding that starts July first is not really going to do much on the linear length of the town's medians. And now we're back to next July first and now we're looking at twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Uh, and now if this is a stage thing, and you said we're going to start with the medians coming up from the south and we'll do one completely at a certain amount of time, then we'll move to the next one where people can see this is the new standard for the community. But it doesn't feel like there's a lot of passion for this or a lot of, and I don't really care, it's just that I just didn't think this was that big of a deal. And, uh, I'm not suggesting we go out with wheelbarrows and donated plans and we hand water with the water truck, although that has been done at a certain time. But what, what, what each person here thinks they would like to drive home to at night or bring people up for dinner and see in your medians, what's the linear length of how much we're talking about? And, uh, is there even a pro-rata square foot linear charge for all the medians in town? And again, I'm just being obnoxious because I'm trying to get to see if anybody cares about this. If not, I'll move on to the next obscure issue. The ski tree is for downtown for shade, but you know, I just, I would love to see somebody else who maybe thinks that the presentation of our commercial, historic commercial corridor, uh, but I want to give you my suggestion tonight that the advertising signs be turned into wind chimes with in a local foundry or something. I mean, there's different things people can do to upgrade the community, but, uh, if we can only do one median, then set the standard, do that one and then do others later, but I, I don't know, I'm, I'm losing enthusiasm on this.
If your lowest price is two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, you probably ought to put, uh, four hundred and fifty thousand instead of two hundred thousand in there. That way at least you can do a chunk of it.
Okay, Councilman Rhodes, that also included if we had to bring in, uh, rock and we didn't supply the rock out of our own rock and things that we.
I understand, but, I mean, th- this isn't going to get done in one year, it's going to be a multi-year project, but we've got what, about fifteen different little strips that we have to take care of? A couple of hundred thousand dollars might take care of two of them, so why don't we try to say we're going to do this over four years, so? You know, four hundred thousand or four hundred and fifty thousand, which would be two hundred and twenty-five times two, that just kind of makes sense to me.
Two twenty, I, I hadn't catched, now what's the total cost?
Uh, two twenty-five times two, so four, four fifty. That, it wouldn't be the total cost for the medians, but it, it'd get a.
Yeah, I mean, we're all guessing, I mean, we, we're, we're just, so let's just put some money in there to, and then, when, when, we don't know the scope of it.
Right.
We haven't chosen it, so I, I, I think, Tom, uh, Tom, I, I, I agree with you, we need to do something with the medians. I think, I, I don't, haven't heard anybody speak against it, so I think you've got, uh, strong support for doing that.
Yeah.
But I would like to see that plan and I'd like to see the, the traffic plan that goes with it because it also got traffic calming, which may affect those medians.
I totally agree, it's going to be an integrated package.
So if I'm hearing this correctly, we'll, we'll increase this and we're taking notes here, so, um, I'll just go ahead and direct the staff to go ahead and do a half million dollars, it sounds like that might be just increase it from two hundred to half million and then you'll have a better idea when we come back to you in June. Um.
When you come back in June, are you going to bring the traffics, the traffic calming piece, all those? Okay.
Yeah. I appreciate you bringing this up, council member, because, um, this, this was something that was already in progress before I got here and the staff has been really good, I mean, I, I gave them the direction based on some of the feedback I heard from council members. They wanted to make sure that we had integration with traffic as well as the, um, you know, the aesthetics part of this. And so they have done a really good job of trying to do that. But I, I do agree with you in looking at this in retrospect, I think two hundred thousand dollars, you, you'd be taking many, many years probably to do this and we've all seen cost escalations and two hundred thousand doesn't seem like it gets you as much as it did years ago.
Just so I get, so, because I'll, I'll help with the budget, so are you saying two hundred and fifty thousand in fiscal year, uh, twenty-five and two hundred and fifty fiscal?
I think what I'm hearing is five hundred. Yeah, cause I think once you said that there were twenty-two of these, I think the big picture is it's going to take years to ever get them all done, so. And next year might be the model to see how they look and how they work and then maybe we can kind of knock out a lot more over the next couple of years, so. We'll go ahead and add five hundred and see how that works and then we'll do that.
Can I ask you a quick question, is it true that the soil is sterile in the medians because of? Have we stopped spraying the medians and can we stop?
We stopped about, we stopped about eight months ago.
On the medians?
Yes, on the medians, we're still doing the roadsides, but the medians themselves, we've stuck, stopped using the pre-emergent and anything we do will have to be turned, will have to be turned over. Um, the material will have to be, you know, new material will have to be turned over and brought in, so that's already been included by the consult.
And can we, with Mr. Chairman, can we reconsider our pre-emergent chemical defoliation along the sides of our roads which runs through our washes and wash down into the tributaries and groundwater? Is this really a critical public safety and health and welfare expenditure? And I'm just asking rhetorically, I'm not an expert, but I guess there's two types of people here, those who use Roundup and those.
Well, from our, well, from our, from our wildfire standpoint, yes, it's important that we keep our shoulders clean for a fire break. And after, after watching what happened with the, uh, on school, on, excuse me, Spuracross Road, when the fire jumped Spuracross, um, we want to make sure that we maintain those fire breaks, um, along our shoulders. So we, we grade them and then we make sure that they're, um, they're clean, but we're not going all the way back in the median, we're not going to do any wider. But when we spray it, we, we spray it with both the pre-emergent and the post-emergent.
Going back to the median piece just shortly, um, when do we ask the community or when will they have an opportunity to contribute their thinking to what we're calling the town's living room?
When we make the presentation, then I'm sure there will be some questions and again, it's not a, it's, it's a plan, it's not a done deal and it's something that can be added to by council. Uh, we want the consultants to give us their best guess and estimate of what we could do and how we could do it. Um, again, the biggest cost is going to be if we come in with a fifteen gallon, a fifteen gallon specimen or a forty-eight inch, a forty-eight inch box, um, specimen. And some of the medians, because of their size, won't, won't accept a forty-eight inch.
Council member, if I may, um, I, I, I think the point got missed and I understand where you're coming from. Um, it's always good to get citizen feedback and, and, you know, maybe what we might do is we might try to do that just prior to coming to council and we can share what that feedback might have been with the residents, does that sound like a, an idea?
Great.
So, um, yeah, it's, these types of projects, aesthetics and things like that are very important to the community and I, I think that would be something that we could easily do, so it might kind of mess up our, our timeline, but we'll try to figure out how we can do it, um, to be able to keep on this project timeline.
Agreed, we'll just work with the consultant and, uh, get the information.
I mean, once you're present, and once you present to council, you'll have the opportunity for, you know, maybe after that to, you know, you're going to make a presentation where we've already identified half a million dollars, uh, right?
Right.
So then, let the, uh, let the, uh, let the comments come after that because now we have a median plan and they can, you know, they can pick and choose the specific pieces. I, I, I wouldn't delay this and I wouldn't, I wouldn't jack around the, uh, uh, the folks that, you know, try to get a, a meeting in, and you've got a lot of stuff on your plate right now, particularly with Hannah and Kelly.
Yes, you see it's in there.
Yeah, we've, we've passed the gestation of a camel, we're now approaching an elephant, I'm just hoping we don't get to a blue whale, so. Uh, but I, I do think that, that, that once it presents to the council and the council said, yeah, we want to go do something, I don't think we have to make a decision that night to say it's going to be this. We can let people comment on it and let them come back and provide the feedback at that point, that'd be my suggestion.
This is all very good discussion, we appreciate the direction, thank you.
Okay, last but not least for the general fund is, um, special events. Um, which is, uh, shown on page twenty of thirty-nine of your, um, big sheets there. And the, uh, fiscal year twenty-five proposed, um, oh, sorry, page twenty-one, forgot to flip mine again, um, of your big sheets and the proposed twenty-five budget, um, is seventy-one thousand, five hundred dollars in operating expenses. Any questions on special events? I'm sorry, what?
What is it for?
Special events.
Well, non-professional services, thirty-four thousand.
Yeah, it's for, um, our parades and rodeo. You'll see on page, yeah, twenty-one of, uh, thirty-nine, the, um, darker gray sections of there breaks out the costs, um.
Why we went from twenty-three, eleven thousand to sixty-eight thousand and twenty-four and now seventy-one thousand, what, what specifically?
I'll bring up the town marshal, I believe he's one that's involved, um, with this as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the council, um, one of the major reasons we're seeing increases, um, unfortunately, the, the cost to bring in the sheriffs is more than double, cost to bring in the sheriff's posse is more than double. Um, the cost of traffic control has more than doubled, unfortunately, and these are things beyond our control.
And then it's also the barricades and all that for the parade, right?
How, how, how many events, n- n- name the events we're, we're going to do.
We just did the parade and we do the rodeo.
The parade?
The rodeo parade.
The rodeo parade, and this is that much money?
Don't we do the high school homecoming still?
No, um, they stopped doing that, uh, junk code, they can't.
I wouldn't know.
So none of this is for Bike Week?
No, no.
Traffic control is not for Bike Week?
No, they pay for their own.
Oh.
But there, I, I do want to just point out though, there is a reimbursement that does come through, uh, from the rodeo group for the law enforcement. Um, a portion of it, so, um.
We have to lay it out and then make.
Is that twenty-one thousand that was showing in the revenues when we were looking at the revenues?
Yes.
So there is, there is an offset, it's not a, it's not all on the town. But not a hundred percent recovery, that's for sure. Hey, let's move, let's move on.
Okay. So, um, our next, uh, set of slides will be covering our, uh, special revenue funds and, uh, just as a reminder, um, these funds are used to account for revenues derived from specific taxes, grants or other restricted revenue sources, the uses and limitations of, um, each special revenue fund are specified by, um, our town ordinances, federal or state statutes, or by, um, the granting agencies. Um, the town currently has four special revenue funds and they are, um, the National uh, Opioid Settlement Fund, which is a new special revenue fund for the town of Cave Creek, um, for the budget process, um, Herf Spuracross Ranch Conservation Area and our, um, grants. Um, the first special revenue fund then that we've got noted here is the. Um, the first special revenue fund then that we've got noted here is the uh, National Opioid Settlement Fund. And. I'm going to, um, that you can find the um, detail of this on page twenty-two of thirty-nine of your packet. We received um, the first proceeds from Maricopa County. Um, late in uh, fiscal year twenty-three, those revenues are shown um, at the ten thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars. That was the start of the beginning fund balance here for fiscal year twenty-four. Um, we've received some revenue in, made some um, a little bit of expenditures and um. The ending fund balance that's projected at the end of fiscal year twenty-four is thirty thousand, one hundred and three dollars. Um, we've appropriated for fiscal year twenty-five. Um, the use of that fund balance plus the additional revenue that's projected to be received in twenty-five um, from Maricopa County. For a total um, expenditure appropriation of forty thousand, nine forty-nine for this fund. The um, next slide um, in the packet shows, um, since this is a new special revenue fund, these are the um, approved uses. For um, the opioid uh, settlement funds, um. Jim, um, in our Fire and Emergency Services Department is the one that uh, manages um, the use of these funds, but um. It's the the, the list of the um, items that um, are approved uses are shown here on this slide.
Mayor and council, just let you know, it's it's going to be used primarily for um. Prevention and education, what I mean by prevention, that ties very closely with education. Jim is already working with the Cave Creek Unified School District, um, they seem to be excited by this. Um, also, um, the caring corps, there was some training that uh, some of those people, so they can recognize signs of opioid uh, use. And Jim, if you want to come up, you want to kind of explain, I think, I I feel very confident with the limited amount of money that we're getting. Some cities are actually spending more than what their opioids settlements are, and they're using it on things like. Um, treatment and all that, and I just think that you don't want to go down that path, um, anything you can do for uh. Prevention and education is really, you seem to get your dividends paid back in many ways, but I'll I'll turn it over to to Jim.
Mayor and Vice Mayor Council, um, again, this is, uh, it's a new fund for us and there's, we're getting money from a lot of sources. If you look at the breakdown on this, it's from all of the different people that uh, promoted the opioids. Excuse me, and it's primarily two areas, like we're saying, is prevention and education outreach or is um, treatment. And uh, the treatment side of it, we already have covered, so. One of the things that a lot of the communities do is they buy the Narcan and things like that and they give that to the folks that are overdosed. Um, we get our Narcan is already on our units and it gets replaced by the hospitals if it gets used. So initially, we thought we'd buy a bunch of that stuff and and make it available and that's just not a good idea up here in Cave Creek, we don't, it won't work. So what we've done so far, what we spent some money so far on is a um, recognizing. The treatment and the um, the impact on the first responders, we we did a a one-day class for the first responders and their families to talk about. Stress and overdosing and things like that, and now we've talked with, uh, reached out to Bill Dolenzel. With the uh, the district, the school district and to Brent on the caring corps. And we will teach and and train their outreach folks that go into the community, go into the homes and we'll teach them how to recognize this and how to handle. A possible overdose if they come upon it, so we're going to do that so that they can, they're serving the community individually that not a lot of people don't know about, so. That's what we're going to take it. Thank you.
That makes sense, hope, any questions? Thank you.
I gotta go. Yeah, uh, that's, uh, uh, just going to break here that uh, we're right at at the end of our time and and you've got to go, so um. You have to go, so, so uh, I think if there's no objections, we'll just adjourn until tomorrow at three o'clock.
Okay, we'll do that, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies.